Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for the day, Lord, and our hearts are on the storm, God, and ask you, Lord, to be with each one of us, Lord, as we weather the storm. And the decisions that we make tonight, Lord, for your business, be with us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I just applaud. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and
We're at the public hearing part of the meeting, six point one, public hearing regarding DHSS building facility bond insurance. Ms. Blue.
Good evening. I'm Meg Blue, Pender County Finance Director. I'm just going to introduce the public hearing, which is required by statute in order to introduce the Department of Health and Human Services facility bond issuance that is planned in the near future. I think there's a sign up.
Thank you. Is there any sign ups for the public hearing?
Carolyn Moser.
Well, I know that you guys would expect that I would be up here to speak in favor of a new HHS facility. I came in August of 2011, and at the time, we had forty-four employees at the Health Department. Our building, right now, is thirty-two years old, which is not real old for a lot of buildings. Right now, we have about seventy-five employees compared to forty-four. Now, we would never have imagined, over this last thirteen years, the kind of growth that Pender County has experienced. It's been phenomenal, to say the least. And so, as that's happened, we've had to accommodate more and more patients. And so, now, even with the added staff, we are out of space. I have some people that are having to operate in some very confidential settings, with the understanding of how important it is that all the information that's shared in some of those areas is secure. But, we're looking at twenty thousand square feet in that building. So, you look over then at the DSS building, and it's seventy-plus years old. It's currently trying to accommodate one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and thirty employees, but it originally started out as a nursing home. And what we've encountered is that we've been out of space for a long time. Medicaid expansion did cause us to have to add additional staff. But fortunately, we've been able to do some intermittent telework with DSS and their programs for monitoring and setting benchmarks for employers. for employees, they can keep track down to the last keystroke someone has done while working from home. So, it's an ideal opportunity then, when it comes to managing staff that either have the skill set to work at home or not. But what we faced with DSS have been the incredible amount of expenses, anywhere from the heating and air, to mold, to electrical, and, in the last few years, plumbing. One of the last plumbing repairs cost us, oh, is it kicking me out?
Yeah, you have to.
One of the last plumbing repairs cost us eighty-five thousand dollars. So, it's never an easy fix with anything, with DSS. And what makes it so great then is because now, with Health and DSS in the same building, we see some of the same clients. There is a difference, but we do see some that see both Health and DSS. So, it's also a good place then to accommodate our residents for their needs. The other thing is that with the younger Health Department, it frees up some space that I think, as we look at some older county buildings, gives us the opportunity to relocate those employees into our Health Department. The other thing I wanted to point out about the Health Department's size is never did we envision COVID and the pandemic. And there were times that we were seeing seventeen-hundred people in a week with COVID vaccine. So, we were very busy, and we did the best with the space that we had. I have to commend staff for Health and DSS. They've hung in there and really dedicated to their jobs. So, that's why I think we felt that it's pretty urgent that the Health Department and DSS are replaced. And we wish the DSS building all the luck in the world.
Thank you. So, there's no other signups?
No, sir, Mr. Kim.
We'll close the public hearing for the DHS facility bond insurance. Public information, Ms. Erin Jones, the first female water treatment plant superintendent for Pender County Utilities, Mr. Cologne.
Good evening, Commissioners, citizens of Pender County. My name is Anthony Cologne, and I'm the Executive Director of Pender County Utilities. And tonight, I want to take the great moment to introduce Ms. Erin Jones, the first female water treatment plant superintendent for Pender County Utilities. And let me say that research discovered that not only she's the first female superintendent for Pender County Utilities, but she's also the first female superintendent from the region. I looked back, and I discovered that the city of Wilmington at one time had a female as a chief operator, but that's how far did that went, and nothing from Brunswick County. So, we're very proud to bring her here today in front. And Erin Jones' professional trajectory transitioned from a role as a state-at-home parent to pursuing an education in marine technology at Cape Fear Community College after graduating in twenty nineteen, and subsequently joining Pender County Utilities in twenty twenty as a water treatment plant operator. Her progression within the organization is a testament of her capability and dedication, advancing to the role of chief operator in twenty twenty-three, and recently as a plan and surface treatment plant superintendent, which she's filling the role right now. And in the last three months, she has already turned that plan around, and we're very proud to have her. And so, here, I want to introduce you, Ms. Erin Jones. Erin, if you have anything to say to the board?
I'm not much for public speaking, but I'm really happy to be here and excited to fill this role. Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Is there any questions from the board?
Anything to the board?
Congratulations. Thank you for choosing Pender County.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seven point two, Mr. Silverman.
Yes, sir, Chairman George.
Recognition of Pender County nine-one-one center.
I'm going to let Mr. Van introduce the IT Department and the nine-one-one center department to discuss the exemplary service that was performed by both of them on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Silverman. I'm Alan Van, Assistant County Manager. Mr. Chairman and fellow board members, we would like to give some special recognition to some of our great staff we have on board with us here in Pender County, and we'd like to ask for you to help with that. Specifically, I'd like to call out the departments of the nine-one-one center, Noah Hofer with Pender EMS and Fire, which is their IT director, as well as our IT department. I would like to call all of their names individually in just a moment, and I would like to ask them to come forward again for special recognition. But meanwhile, I do have just a few words I'd like to say. Just didn't want to forget anything, so I wanted to share this with you as far as what this recognition is in reference to. In the early morning hours of July nineteenth, beginning around one a.m., Pender County's nine-one-one center had a total outage of their CAD and telephone systems. The nine-one-one personnel responded quickly with implementing contingency plans, and as a result, nine-one-one service was never lost for our citizens. As time passed and things continued to unfold, it was determined that the rest of the sheriff's office was also having problems with their computers. Once nine-one-one contacted our IT department, the staff, including Noah Hofer, Pender EMS and Fire's IT director, mobilized quickly to aid in getting the nine-one-one center into service, as well as assisting deputies with their computers. As it turns out, a software update related to the county's endpoint protection solution had been pushed out by the vendor that was creating a blue screen error that left computers inaccessible. We were very relieved that it was not a cyber attack. Later, it was determined this issue impacted many organizations at the national and global level, resulting in major issues such as flight delays, and the list goes on and on, as far as that sort of thing. The IT team worked tirelessly throughout the night and morning, as well as all day on that Friday during the business day, to ensure all computers were functioning properly for all departments and county employees. As a testament to how well the staff handled this situation, the county manager's office never received the first complaint during this crisis. Instead, we received multiple compliments about how well both the nine-one-one center and IT teams handled the situation. As a matter of fact, Sheriff Cutler and Major Collier were among the first to give accolades to these teams bright and early that morning, around five-thirty, as I recall. Pender County is fortunate to have such dedicated and professional staff. So, once again, I'd like to call the departments, each individual up, and I'm going to ask everyone to remain standing up here, if you will, once I call your name. And I'd also like to ask the sheriff or Major Collier if they have anything they would like to add in addition. So, first of all, let me call the nine-one-one center staff, Jane Walker, Brooke Engardio, I'm sorry if I'm saying the name incorrectly, Alexandria Batts Turnage, please come stand right here, Kaylee Kramer, Sharon Rowl, with Pender EMS and Fire, IT Director Noah Hofer, he's not present, okay. Pender County's IT Department Director Marcel Miranda, and Assistant Director Chris Hewitt, he's not here. Oh, he is here. I thought somebody shook their head. He wasn't here. I'm sorry. Josh Norwood, Connie Ravenbark, Joseph Sigmund, Mal Lowe, Christine Pretty, Felicia Thomas, and Scott Featherstone. Let's give them a hand, everyone. Sheriff, did you have something you'd like to say?
I'd just like to say thank you for recognizing these great employees. I think it's just an example, a prime example, of what can be done when relationships between different departments are formed, good working relationships. And we do enjoy a good working relationship with all these departments. And I have to say that I did nothing. They did it all. I was actually in Louisiana with the Bergoff softball team that I think y'all may be gonna recognize here in a few minutes. But I got the call. Major Collier had worked with these individuals, and they had it all worked out. So, I'm very thankful for that. And again, thank you all for what you did to keep that nine-one-one center up and running. We appreciate that. The county appreciates that. Very important. So, thank you.
And if you don't mind, if I could get you to turn around, just perchance the board members have anything they'd like to share with you, okay?
So, I would like to say thank you. I didn't even realize that it happened till after y'all had already fixed the problem. And don't let Delta take y'all away. They're still having problems with the crowd strikes, so don't let Delta steal y'all away. But congratulations, and we're very proud of what y'all accomplished. It's good to know we've got that talent and ability right here in our county to take care of us. That's a big deal when the nine-one-one center goes down.
Yes, it is.
A lot of people.
I'm technology illiterate, so forgive me, but did this not require y'all to have to touch every computer?
That is correct.
Yeah, and that's a big thing, when they have to go physically touch every computer. I know another company down the road that had to do it to nine thousand computers that day, so good job.
Yep. Congratulations. Thank y'all so much. Any other Commissioners?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And especially to our IT department. Really proud of you. How y'all turned the scene. And of course, the nine-one-one center. We always count on you, the unspoken heroes and unseen heroes.
Appreciate you. Appreciate Connie coming out and doing my computers. She came out probably. I thought my computer had died or something. Great job, y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Van, for making that present. Thank you, Mr. Van.
Yes, sir.
Community Justice Center. I think our District Attorney, Mr. Ben David, is here to talk to us tonight. Welcome, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners, good evening. Thank you so much for having me here this night. So, twenty-five years ago, when I began as a prosecutor here in Pender County, I did so with a solemn vow to speak for the dead in murder trials, to give victims a voice anytime a crime occurs, and to be the conscience for this community. Twenty years ago, I was honored to become the elected district attorney. And in all that time, I don't think I've ever appeared before you. More excited about what I see on the horizon for Pender County as a way to truly help victims of crime, focus on being a one-stop shop for what we can do to critically get evidence at an early stage that wins the toughest cases in the criminal justice system. If I had to tell you one thing on the way out the door, because I will be retiring on September third, it is that Pender County has always had a real issue with child sexual assaults. Just the Carousel Center, who I'm going to introduce you to in a minute, sixty-two children last year were in our courts with very serious cases involving statutory offenses, child molestation, and the like. And I want you to consider that in these hardest-approved cases, you're frequently dealing with a pillar of the community who has no criminal record. You're dealing with a five- or six-year-old child who can't really advocate for themselves. We need the silent witnesses that scream the truth. DNA, the evidence collection that happens at hospitals, that's how we take these worst cases and prove them beyond a reasonable doubt. Now, about five years ago, when I thought about the future for Pender County, I huddled actually with who I regard as the best-looking district attorney in the state of North Carolina, and that's my twin brother, John. And we wanted to take a three-county approach to this. He, of course, is the district attorney for Bladen, Brunswick, and Columbus Counties, and I for New Hanover and Pender. And what we were looking at is these numbers for the Carousel Center. And we said, and this was right before the pandemic started, hey, why don't we not just have the Carousel Center be this mothership for all this area, but let's start deploying resources where they need to go? Because here's what really happens. When a child presents to us, we need to do two things immediately. We need to get them on a forensic interview with a trusted adult on tape, so that there's no suggestion that they're being coached, and that we can memorialize that story. We also need to have that critical physical evidence collection to collect DNA, take those pictures, and the like. And that needs to happen in the first few minutes. So, that's the idea of putting a kid on a carousel. But the final thing you need is you need that follow-up therapy for the post-traumatic stress that that child's inevitably going to be experiencing. What I've learned is that today's victim is tomorrow's defendant. And if we don't get help for people who are traumatized, they end up traumatizing other people later. They choose bad relationships. They engage in self-harm. They turn to drugs to medicate that pain. That's the opioid epidemic. And so, the Carousel Center's been doing all of that for twenty-four years for Pender County, but it's always taken place in Wilmington, just like it has for Brunswick County. So, the first thing we did is we sent a Carousel Center out and planted it at the courthouse in Bolivia, in Brunswick County. And in five years, they've had a fourfold increase in the number of reported cases in Brunswick County. And that's because this is the most underreported case in the criminal justice system. One of the cases moved me the most in my twenty-five years as a prosecutor, and you'll remember her, Ms. Dora, when she was viciously assaulted right outside of Atkinson, she insisted on having a press conference after the rape trial. And we had said to her that we hadn't had a reported rape in three years in Pender County. When that trial was finished, and we put that man in prison for over fifty-five years, and she held that press conference, Pender County led the state in the number of reported rape cases the following year, because now it had a spokeswoman. I'm telling you right now that the sixty-two cases that we have for Pender County for our children are going to quadruple if we do it right. So, what I want to introduce you to is the Pender County Carousel Advocacy Center. You can see it's a former medical park that many of you are familiar with, just right around the corner. There's going to co-locate several professionals in here. If you look up family justice centers, there's a hundred fifty in North Caroli-- in America, there's ten in North Carolina. Basically, it co-locates child advocacy centers with domestic violence shelter and services, rape crisis. Instead of having to go to nine different locations to tell your story, you have to tell it once. That counseling is onsite. So, here's where the vision is. If you look at the screen, here's the outside of the building, and here's the multidisciplinary team's observation rooms and interview rooms for the children and for the adults that are going to be in these family violence situations. We have community meeting rooms that are going to be in there, ample space for our sheriff, our chiefs, all of the-- who've come in here and strongly endorsed the idea of working together in team-like fashion on these cases. You can see that there's a play area that's obviously critically important for these children. That beautiful lobby right out there just needs to be filled. We are within a month away of realizing this dream. I have found a foundation here in North Carolina out of Charlotte who heard me speak about, actually, Ms. Dora's case. And they came up to me and said, if your Commissioners will give money, we'll match it up to ten thousand dollars. So, I'm here tonight, and you know me, I don't think I've ever been before this board and asked for any money. And I'm not asking for it tonight. I'm asking you to learn more about this, and if you think it's a good idea, I ask you to consider giving ten thousand dollars to this effort to match what the foundation will do called the Hope Star Foundation. This is a reality. These therapy rooms, the things that we can do, this front desk waiting area, it has people ready to go from some incredible agencies. Coastal Horizons, who you've heard of, is in here with rape crisis. The Carousel Center, that's been there for twenty-four years. Carousel, like I said, is in three counties. Coastal Horizon's in about twenty-five, and they have seven hundred employees, and have been around fifty-two years, so they're not going anywhere either. Pender needs a home for this. Here's our home. I can tell you that if we do this right, we're going to be far more effective in a courtroom. And so, if there's one thing I would ask you, again, on the way out of this great job, is to make an investment in the children and in these cases, and consider doing something like this. Just again, look at family justice centers, see the dismissals go down, and the rates of conviction go up on the worst cases in the criminal justice system. I believe we can do this. It's just like what you were honoring with-- It's just like what you were honoring with the great 911 call center. It's all about relationships. It's all about forging this bond with co-located professionals that say, together, we're better. And if we go all-in on this, we're going to be better, and so are our children. So with that, I'll yield the floor. I did bring Amy Fith, who is our executive director and has been for over a decade with the Carousel Center, if you had any questions for her. I just wanted to leave time for any questions, and I appreciate you letting me go a little long tonight. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, that money thing and asking for it, and I believe we've never denied you, but there was a lab, and I think this is a...
Yeah.
Thank you for everything you've done.
There was a lab, yes.
In New Hanover County and Pender County, you have made a difference in your career, and I for one applaud you, and I think we all should give our DA a round of applause. Thank you. We're so proud of you.
Thank you. And you're right, I have asked on behalf of the criminal justice system before.
But...
And you've always supported it, by the way.
We have always supported, because it's always been...
And she's a tough one to go up in a courtroom against, too, by the way.
And it's something that you've always brought to us, things that we can get behind, and I think this is something that we certainly can get behind, an integrated holistic approach to help our children when they're most vulnerable.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I for one applaud you for bringing this, and thank you.
I'd like to second that, you've done a really good job, I thought you wanted to go to the hall. And I know you and your brother-brothers are really doing outstanding jobs.
Thank you.
And so I hope you enjoy your retirement, we're gonna miss you. So you'll stay busy, though.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for bringing us to Pender County.
Thank you, Dan, really.
I appreciate that.
I've known you a few years.
Yes, sir, we've worked in law enforcement a long time, and this is not a living funeral, by the way, I planned on... I'm only hitting judicial retirement. I hope to practice law for years to come, and I hope to do this kind of work, by the way. I'm going to be working with our Community Justice Center in New Hanover County, right across the street from the courthouse, in the Harrelson Center, the old jail. And it's from doing all the research on this that I realized Pender County needed it, too. My heart has always been here. I know there's not the same resources that there are in that city. We don't need that. What we need are good people with the right relationships, and I'm telling you, with my prosecutors, who are going to still be here after I leave, with these amazing men and women of law enforcement, with these nonprofits we're talking about, and with all of you, we're going to continue to be very effective in a courtroom. We've already got a place for defendants, that's the courthouse and the jail. What we don't have is a place for victims. This can be our one-stop shop for all of that, and I really think if we do it right, it'll be here for years to come.
When do you need an answer for us for the matching?
We are meeting with the HopeStar Foundation on Wednesday, and all we're doing there is reporting out that we have met with you. I think by the next meeting is fine. If we could get on a future agenda, like I said, I'll be glad to come here at any time for this kind of work as a private citizen, too.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David.
Thank you very much, Mr. Graves.
I was just going to invite you to come on by, if you would like to come and actually kick the tires and look under the hood for yourself.
She's going to be here before the Qantas Club here in Burgau in about a half an hour. We're really trying to generate community support. Do you want to give them the address for this place?
This is 311 South McNeil, so really three buildings back from the sheriff's office, so...
And when do you anticipate staff being...
Well, I've been actually doing Mondays there for the, probably the last six months, so we've been slowly building up and getting what I call adopt-a-nook, so people that are adopting the spaces to update it, and so we've been working on that for the better part of six to nine months. And so we've got our brand-new couch in there, and we've also got our evaluation table from Charlotte, so we are about, probably about two weeks to a month from our first CME to actually be held in there. And we'll be submitting, right out of the gate, we'll be submitting for our national accreditation, our provisional accreditation will be happening before September. So just like for New Hanover, just like we just submitted our full accreditation for Brunswick County, Pender County will have a fully nationally accredited child advocacy center that is separate and independent, which is really important to us, to the Carousel team and board. We want to make sure that it will have its own national accreditation as a separate entity here in Pender County.
That sounds wonderful, thank you. Look forward to it.
Well, thank you all very much for your time.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, God continue to bless the people of Pender County. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, could we ask the manager to have this on for approval for our next meeting?
Yes, yes, we'll put that on the next meeting agenda.
After he consults with Ms. Blue as to where we go pull this money from.
Yes, ma'am.
We're now public comment, Mr.?
Yes, sir, Miss Chairman. Sheriff Cutler? Mr. Batson had indicated you were going to go first.
There goes our IT team.
The softball team was here, didn't get the sign up?
Yeah, we've got them on the list, yes, sir. The chairman had me add them, yes, sir.
Bring them.
So while they're coming in, I'm going to go ahead and read the form here, this applies to everyone who's speaking, not just them. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairperson in order which their names appear on the sheet. Speaker shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating name and address. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks, use of profanity, and the discussion of personnel or other matters deemed confidential by law. And they'll have three minutes. So I didn't realize that the high sheriff had put you on the agenda, so I put you on there, or the public comment. So I'm going to give you the floor, but I think we've got something here that we should be proud of as a county. So Coach, it's all yours.
How you doing, everyone? This is Burgau Debs, 16, 15-year-old.
Time to speak into the...
Can you speak in... Coach, can you speak into that microphone so people watching on the big screen can hear you?
Tessie, how you doing? Basically, this is Burgau Debs, right here, our home native girl, each of these girls from the Pender County area, for the most part, 90% of them. We had one player that was from the Duplin County that came to assist us, and we started off at the beginning of the season, of the rec ball season, just basically working with the girls, practice, practice as much as we could. Of course, you see, they all are teenagers, they have jobs, school, everything that's including not just practice, so it was hard for us to get these girls there every day just for the practices, but we managed to get as much as we could. After we got that, we went from Burgau to the States, up to Bessemer City, we won that undefeated, went up there, came undefeated. Next journey was Louisiana, Alexandria, Louisiana, and that was a bigger task. I think it was seven states there. We came from, we went from Burgau, North Carolina, becoming North Carolina, the actual state, representing the whole state, and it was a challenge, a big challenge, because every state out there is basically representing their state and trying to, you know, come in at number one, be number one. We came in runners-up. I think that was a great, great achievement, we was running up next to the Alexandria, Louisiana home team, there was home, host team, of course, that's a little home-court advantage, you know how that works. Other than that, everyone else, we competed as much as we could. Everyone is not here, majority that we could be here, like I said, most of them, some of them are working, some of them still in school doing everything. This is Sarah Cutler, Jada Tesora, Yada Kenyatta Jacobs, who we got, Jamaya Johnson, Shamaya Johnson, Naima Shepherd, the other coach, also the president over Burgau Dixie Youth, Alyssa Perez, my name is Coach Pat. I just want to let these girls know, we appreciate, and I'm pretty sure the whole community appreciate everything they've done.
The second-best team in seven states?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes, ma'am.
That is amazing. Young women, y'all rock. We're so proud of you.
Can they come up here, and we'll stand behind them, and we'll get a picture? The commissioner will scratch in here.
They're taller than we are.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Actually, multiple sports, whether high schools, and they're not already learning the whole yet.
That's amazing.
Thank you. Once again, congratulations to them. It's nice to see, come across from the whole county to make that team. That team's a hard team to field. I remember when my daughter was playing softball, it's hard to field that age group, and usually...
Sheriff, was that your daughter?
Yep, that was... So we're moving along, next one.
Tommy Batson?
I asked Tommy to sign up on the public comment to give us a quick update on the weather coming our way.
I'll keep in our three minutes, Chairman, board members. As you know, we've been watching the tropics over the past couple of weeks. Hurricane Debbie formed overnight, impacted Florida, it's crossing Florida and Georgia tonight into tomorrow. The forecast is in the next 48 hours, it's passover, or just offshore of the Carolina coast. Forecasters are expecting an eight to 16 inches of rain, which we do not need. Last month, we were in a drought, as Mark Sykes said, and now we're getting more rain than we need. Biggest thing is, don't focus on the track, focus on where the storm's going to go, the air cone is where it's going to go. Just a little background, county staff, other departments and partner agencies have been talking, preparing, and planning. Hats off to Troy and the facility team, they've moved all our assets and equipment that need to be moved for shelter operations today. I think they've got one or two small things to move in the morning, but that we're pre-deploying everything we can across the county. It's unknown exactly what strength this storm will be. We're planning for a category-one storm. It's going to go offshore tonight, we'll see what it does when it hits the Gulf Stream, it may intensify, and then the Weather Service conference call before the meeting tonight was, they really don't know exactly where it's going to go. It's going to go from just offshore to Charlotte. We're going to see impacts of flash flooding, river flooding, gusty winds, the tornado chances will start this evening and stay with us throughout the event. EOC staff is preparing to work later part of the week and into the weekend if needed, and that's just a quick update. We'll send you an email every morning of what's going on, what's happening. We've got a state emergency prepared, it's draft form if it's needed, and we'll keep you on the loop of anything you need. The biggest thing is, make sure you got a plan for you, your pets, and your loved ones.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate those updates that you've been sending out, I've been sharing those with the community as I can, and they appreciate it. So we appreciate you keeping us informed.
Thank y'all.
This telephone warning system that we have that works very well...
Yes, ma'am.
What flooding conditions would initiate contact through this system?
So Nexo, as well as our EM app, will send you mass notifications on flood, flash flood warnings, and hurricane tropical storm warning and watches. And we can go in and double-check all the settings this evening, but it will send mass notification if there's a life-threatening event anywhere in our county. As well as we can go in and manually send a notification, we sent one on the app this afternoon to manually notify people just to prepare and get ready for the storm. So we can push beyond the Weather Service capabilities, instantaneously, it's normally 30 seconds to a minute before weather radio goes off.
Well, flooding and potential flooding conditions initiate a state of emergency conditions for EOC?
We can, we've prepared a state of emergency pre-storm, and we may enact one later in the week, but the flooding issue will be, no matter what. It automatically, when the Weather Service, I know they're getting ready to get buzzed, I don't know what to do, but the minute, the minute the Weather Service sends the polygon out, anybody in that polygon will get the mass notification from our EM app as well as the Nexo system, so that's automatically done through the Weather Service, and it goes out to our citizens in the affected areas.
What's a polygon?
It's the little, when you see the weather map, they draw the little funny map, and it's shading in, the tornado, the little cone. If you're in their area, it automatically sends it to your cell phone if you're geolocated and set up for that area in that part of the town or county.
So also, not only do they have that, they do have an app, emergency management app.
Download the EM app on your Android or Apple phone, it's free, and you are required to put no personal information, and you just download it and keep it, and you can sign up if you want alerts or you don't want alerts.
What is that address that they can get that...
You go to the App Store and just type in Pender County EM, and you can load it right there with no cost and no information.
Pender County EM.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all, have a good night.
Keep up the good work, as usual.
Kim Meyer?
Welcome, it's always good to see familiar faces come back to join us.
Come back a little too often, don't I? Kim Meyer, 102 Leslie Lane, and that's Scottsville. I'm here, I came about a year ago and asked you all to consider an onsite stormwater manager for Pender County, and I know we have retainer for stormwater contractors. I'd like to maybe work with the commissioner, my commissioner for Scottsville, and possibly the planners, to understand how we directly communicate with those consultants, or maybe we put back on another item to consider getting a stormwater manager again for Pender County. We have a new community being built called Grass, I'm sorry, Sweetgrass, and our community is very concerned about flooding potential because we flood into the field where this development will be developed. We have, we also have communities within our communities, we all drain into each other, and some of the drainage lines are faulty and are actually broke, and we've had several people from Pender County out to look at the sites, some of the drain lines are even bricked up, and we need to understand what we need to do to rectify this situation before this community's built, and before we get the storm, which is going to be too late, but before we get the next Florence or whatever. We need to be proactive rather than reactive, and I need to, I need some help in order to determine how we reach out and get that help for our community. I also ran across this implementing low-impact development for Pender County. It's from 2011, and it was written by Benjamin Andrew, or Andrea, I'm sorry, but it discusses how to actually create a development that will fit the site rather than the opposite, which seems to happen quite a bit. It also talks about minimizing land clearing and how to, I'm sorry, how to minimize or disconnect impervious surfaces. I think it's something that would be really beneficial for our community, especially as fast as what we are growing. In fact, NOAA statistic from 2004 indicated that 53% of the US nation's population is in coastal counties, and that's only a 17% land area, and that was from 2004, so we all know that that number's grown quite a bit. So any help that you can give us, I know you've got my email, my phone number, so please reach out. And I also want to invite the planners and the commissioners, anybody that wants to come, to Scottsville again to look at these areas that we know are going to flood, and to help us figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Betty Jacobs?
She doesn't, Reverend Jacobs, did you want to speak?
I'm sorry, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. All righty, thank you all. Moving into the consent agenda, board members, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, is there any items that you wish further discussion on or to pull?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item 9.2, just for some further clarification and some background.
Pull 9.2, move it to 10.6?
Yes.
Any others? If not, is there a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
There's a motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of item 9.2, which is now 10.6.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? We are now in action. Items, approvals and resolutions. Approval of resolution by the county authorizing, execution of opioid settlement... We have a good bit of new staff that's coming in, and we hope to see them fully trained, not just within the office, but going to classes that are offered through, through the continuing education courses. Again, we would like to set up a fully operational enforced collections program, which will include the wage garnishments and the bank attachments, things that I have spoken of. Melissa would also like to put out more information to our taxpayers regarding payment of taxes and the consequences of non-payment. Again, this is the postcards that we sent out, which was completely new, and we did see a lot of success with those, with those postcards. We sent them out right before the tax deadline, so right in between Christmas and New Year's, and it did seem to be a big help. And then, of course, keeping up with regular delinquent letters that would go out, anything to help remind the taxpayers that there are unpaid taxes. Some of them do go unnoticed. Our intent-to letters, so that we give taxpayers a chance to pay before we add additional fees and penalties with having to do enforced collection remedies. And then, also, we would like to enhance our current payment plan, which we have used for many years and does work great, and the citizens do utilize it, but a lot don't know that we have it. So, the more that we get that knowledge out there, it's better, it's better for the taxpayers. Again, she would like to begin an outreach program with videos on the website of, you know, how to do things, such as your appeals and your reappraisals, and also how to pay online. We get that question a lot, quite often. She would like to include more pamphlets, like brochures, on the exclusions and different things that are provided for the taxpayers, public speaking engagements throughout the year, which I hope will not be done by me. She would like to ensure that each position is fully equipped to perform their job and their functions efficiently, analyze the office structure and staffing, so we maintain the high standard of customer service and quality of work, and analyze our current processes to determine if inefficiencies exist. We always strive to focus on employee morale and a work atmosphere that ensures a positive work environment, focus on ensuring statutory compliance in all areas, especially our audits for exclusions, exemptions, and business personal property, begin preliminary work on upcoming county-wide appraisal, reappraisal, I'm sorry, and lots of training with the current software that we have, that I'm sure we are all familiar with. I believe, and I'm not sure, because this part, I wasn't exactly privy to, but I believe that you may have also received a packet that has a copy of the acceptance of this settlement, or if you don't, that's something that we can get to you. I'm not sure what was already emailed. But basically, as I previously stated, per North Carolina general statutes, before, before you can order me to collect any other taxes, you must first accept the settlement of this past year. This includes the approval of not only the revenue collected and revenue remaining delinquent, but also the insolvent list and relief from collection of the insolvents and delinquent motor vehicles. And at this time, I would ask if you have any questions on the settlement I have presented, and if not, I would request that you move to accept the 2022-2023 tax settlement.
Sarah, that item is in the agenda.
Is it? Okay. Great. Thank you. And then, lastly, before I can begin to bill or collect on the 2024 taxes, I must be ordered to do so by the governing board, which I believe this was probably also included in that original one. These orders will enable me to collect the current year for tax of 2024, as well as continue to use enforced collections on the prior 10 years, 2014 through 2023. And if you have no questions regarding this, again, I would request you move to order to collect current 2024 taxes, as well as approve the order to collect 2023 and prior year taxes. That's all I have.
So, any questions about these resolutions, or if not, is there a motion to approve?
No, she hasn't.
Is there a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Nice to see you, Ms. Pridgen.
Thank you. It's nice to see you as well. Yes.
I have a quick tax question before you leave.
Sure.
And I spoke to Mr. Sullivan this morning about it. So, if I'm, if I'm from out of county, if I live in New Hanover County currently, or if I just live somewhere else, and I moved to a rental in, say, Scottsville, and I, I register my car, and is it registered to the zip code, or is it registered to my address? The reason I'm asking is, I got a copy of a DMV form from a person that lives in Blake's Reserve. They have a Wilmington, that has a Wilmington zip code, Wilmington address, that part of Scottsville, even though it's in Pender County. They paid taxes to the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County. So, I was asking another lady that lives in Scottsville, I mean, at Surf City, she has a Holly Ridge address. She said it took her two years to finally start paying Pender County taxes on her vehicles.
On her vehicles?
Yes.
Her current registered vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the taxes were going to Onslow County. So, how does the DMV collect taxes? I'm assuming it's through zip code?
It's tied, it...
Because how many hundreds of thousands of dollars are we losing, especially in Scottsville? I mean, in Surf City.
Yeah. I mean, to my knowledge, it's tied by, you know, what address you're using at the time of registration. Is that correct, Jessica? Yes.
But if it has a Wilmington zip code, which Scottsville does, does that link it to New Hanover County?
It does. Unless you tell them, it will.
I'm sorry, we're off topic.
No. Well, we are one department, but two divisions, collections and assessing, so you get two for the price of one.
Yeah. There you go.
So, because they're having an issue with the address, if it's showing a different county on there than what they're in, they need to call the number on the information that they receive, and they can make a change by calling them and letting them know what address they're at and what county they're in. It has to start there, because we only get what they send to us as the county.
See, the unfortunate thing is, the majority of our residents that's moving into these areas are not from here. They don't know if they live in Pender County or if they live in Hyde County.
Right.
You know, they're just paying taxes because it says, "I got to pay my taxes to get my tax." So, it's kind of concerning that we are probably missing out lots of money, you know, that's going to New Hanover. Because this person, I can show you a copy of, she paid a Wilmington, New Hanover County debt service tax, she paid a personal property tax or whatever it is, she paid a Wilmington tax, and she paid a Wilmington fee, in the amount of 100 and some, $47 that went out to another county, and she's living in services that Pender County's providing, you know, in that apartment complex.
It makes it a lot easier when the taxpayer, if they've called beforehand, before they ever make the payment, look at their sheet, see that it is incorrect. If they call us, we let them know what they need to do, or they can go ahead and call the number on there and call the state, and that's what the phone number on there does, is cause the state, lets them know that their information is incorrect on their bill, and then they can make that change there, and then it would come to the correct county.
But it's up to the title. There's no way we can police that.
There's no way we can fix that.
Because we're held at the mercy of what's sent to us from the DMV.
That's correct.
Yeah. And I'm sure, you know, back prior to 2013, whenever everyone was paying their local tax offices separately from their registration, it was more noticeable, you know, why would I go to New Hanover County to pay this tax? But now that it's all included, you know, to be sure, something that is just not paid much attention to.
Would it be beneficial to at least try an informational campaign?
Yeah, because I mean, there's 280 apartments in that complex.
Yeah.
Just in that one complex, so if all 280 of those apartments are paying for three or two or three cars to New Hanover County, that's a...
I can, I can definitely add that to, you know, the goals that we have as far as wanting to get more information out to the public. I can add that, you know, with just giving the knowledge.
But how would we get that, how would we get that information out to, to them, that, you know, if I don't pay any other taxes or pay any other things to Pender County, I don't have a need for you to send me a mailer, or, you know what I mean? How am I going to know that I moved here from Charlotte and I'm living in Scottsville, but I'm got a Wilmington zip code, New Hanover County zip code, and I'm living in Pender County? I wouldn't know that. I mean, honestly, I wouldn't know that.
And I think that's, I mean, I think the good news is, we know the areas to target or have a concept of the areas to target, so I think we could kind of focus on those areas first and build out if we need to.
Well, because we have overlapping zip codes at Surf City and Wallace.
Right.
And so, there's Duplin County, there's Onslow County, New Hanover County, that we're sharing zip codes with. Can we not petition the postal service?
Maybe our own zip code. Information that you put out.
Right.
You need to pay attention on your registration for your vehicle, your tax county. It's on there, and if it says anything other than Pender, you need to call, you need to fix it.
Right.
But how do you get that information?
It's on your, it's on your registration.
Well, I know that, but how do you get the person that's going to do that? This lady that I've got the copy of, she moved from Eagles Watch in Hampstead. She knows she doesn't live in Pender County, but she just doesn't pay any attention to it.
Yeah.
Well, I think a start is...
Yeah, I just don't know how we get that information. Nobody watches very...
There's some from this brandies' expertise.
There's no news people in here right now, so I can say it, there's very few people that watch local TV.
Yeah.
So, you can't put a campaign on TV. Not everybody has Facebook and social media, so we can't do that. We have one local newspaper in the county that runs weekly, and the majority of their subscriptions are in that area. So, I don't know how you, I'm sorry to get off topic.
Mailing might be a start.
Maybe a targeted mailing.
Yeah.
Well, it could also be something that I would be glad to bring up, you know, at our conferences that we have, whenever we do have the attention of, you know, other people from the state that are there, NCDUR, and that are, you know, more in ties with how motor vehicle billing is working, it may be, if we're having the problem...
Yeah, there's got to be others.
Then there's others. So, I would be glad to bring this to someone at our tax collections conference and say, "Have you gotten these complaints? What do you suggest we do about this? How have you combated this?"
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, not at all. Not at all. That's what we're here for.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
I've been lost track of where we're at now. Somebody's got to pull me back in.
10.3, approval of resolution supporting an application to the local government commission
for this approval of a county financing agreement for the 2024 new DHSS facility. Ms. Blue.
Customer service and quality of work and analyze our current processes to determine if inefficiencies exist. We always strive to focus on employee morale and a work atmosphere that ensures a positive work environment. Focus on ensuring statutory compliance in all areas, especially our audits for exclusions, exemptions, and business personal property. Begin preliminary work on upcoming countywide appraisal, reappraisal, I'm sorry. And lots of training with the current software that we have that I'm sure we are all familiar with. I believe, and I'm not sure because this part I wasn't exactly privy to, but I believe that you may have also received a packet that has a copy of the acceptance of this settlement. Or if you don't, that's something that we can get to you. I'm not sure what was already emailed. But basically, as I previously stated, per North Carolina general statutes, before you can order me to collect any other taxes, you must first accept the settlement of this past year. This includes the approval of not only the revenue collected and revenue remaining delinquent, but also the insolvent list and relief from collection of the insolvents and delinquent motor vehicles. And at this time, I would ask if you have any questions on the settlement I have presented. And if not, I would request that you move to accept the 2022-2023 tax settlement.
Sarah, that item is in the agenda.
Is it? Okay, great. Thank you. And then, lastly, before I can begin to bill or collect on the 2024 taxes, I must be ordered to do so by the governing board, which I believe this was probably also included in that original one. These orders will enable me to collect the current year for tax of 2024 as well as continue to use enforced collections on the prior 10 years, 2014 through 2023. And if you have no questions regarding this, again, I would request you move to order to collect current 2024 taxes as well as approve the order to collect 2023 and prior year taxes. That's all I have.
So any questions about these resolutions? If not, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Nice to see you, Ms. Bridget.
Thank you. It's nice to see you as well. Yes.
Tax question before you leave.
Sure.
And I spoke to Mr. Silverman this morning about it. So if I'm from out of county, if I live in New Hanover County currently, or if I just live somewhere else, and I moved to a rental in, say, Scottsville. And I registered my car. And is it registered to the zip code or is it registered to my address? The reason I'm asking is, I got a copy of a DMV form from a person that lives in Blake's Reserve. They have a Wilmington, that has a Wilmington zip code, Wilmington address in that part of Scottsville, even though it's in Pender County. They paid taxes to the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County. So I was asking another lady that lives in Scottsville, I mean, at Surf City. She has a Holly Ridge address. She said it took her two years to finally start paying Pender County taxes.
On her vehicles?
Yes.
Her current registered vehicles. Okay.
Because the taxes were going to Onslow County. So how does the DMV collect taxes? I'm assuming it's through zip code?
It's tied.
Because how many hundreds of thousands of dollars are we losing, especially in Scottsville?
Yeah, I mean, to my knowledge, it's tied by, you know, what address you're using at the time of registration. Is that correct, Jessica? Yes.
If it has a Wilmington zip code, which Scottsville does, does that link it to New Hanover County?
It does. Unless you tell them, it will.
I'm sorry, we're off topic.
No, well, we are one department, but two divisions, collections and assessing. So you get two for the price of one.
Yeah, there you go.
So because they're having an issue with the address, if it's showing a different county on there than what they're in, they need to call the number on the information that they receive. And they can make a change by calling them and letting them know what address they're at and what county they're in. It has to start there because we only get what they send to us as the county.
See, the unfortunate thing is, the majority of our residents that's moving into these areas are not from here. They don't know if they live in Pender County or if they live in Hyde County. You know, they're just paying taxes because it says, I gotta pay my taxes to get my tax. So it's kind of concerning that we are probably missing out on lots of money, you know, that's going to New Hanover. Because this person, I can show you a copy of, she paid a Wilmington, New Hanover County debt service tax. She paid a personal property tax or whatever it is. She paid a Wilmington tax and she paid a Wilmington fee. An amount of a hundred and some forty-seven dollars that went out to another county. And she's living in services that Pender County's providing, you know, in that apartment complex.
It makes it a lot easier when the taxpayer, if they've called beforehand, before they ever make the payment. Look at their sheet, see that it is incorrect. If they call us, we let them know what they need to do. Or they can go ahead and call the number on there and call the state. And that's what the phone number on there does is cause the state, lets them know that their information is incorrect on their bill. And then they can make that change there. And then it would come to the correct county.
But it's up to the title. There's no way we can police that.
There's no way we can fix that.
Because we're held at the mercy of what's sent to us from the DMV.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm sure, you know, back prior to 2013, whenever everyone was paying their local tax offices separately from their registration, it was more noticeable, you know, why would I go to New Hanover County to pay this tax? But now that it's all included, you know, to be sure, something that is just not paid much attention to.
Would it be beneficial to at least try an informational campaign?
Yeah, because I mean, there's 280 apartments in that complex.
Yeah.
Just in that one complex. So if all 280 of those apartments are paying for three or two or three cars to New Hanover County, that's a...
I can definitely add that to, you know, the goals that we have as far as wanting to get more information out to the public. I can add that, you know, with just giving the knowledge.
How would we get that information out to them? You know, if I don't pay any other taxes or pay any other things to Pender County, I don't have a need for you to send me a mailer or, you know what I mean? How am I gonna know that I moved here from Charlotte and I'm living in Scottsville, but I'm got a Wilmington zip code, New Hanover County zip code, and I'm living in Pender County? I wouldn't know that. I mean, honestly, I wouldn't.
And I think that's, I mean, I think the good news is we know the areas to target or have a concept of the areas to target. So I think we could kind of focus on those areas first and build out if we need to.
Because we have overlapping zip codes at Surf City and Wallace.
Right.
And so there's Duplin County, there's Onslow County, New Hanover County that we're sharing zip codes with. Can we not petition the postal service?
Maybe we put our own zip code. Information that you put out.
Right.
You need to pay attention on your registration for your vehicle, your tax county. It's on there. And if it says anything other than Pender, you need to call. You need to fix it.
Right.
But how do you get that information?
It's on your registration.
Well, I know that, but how do you get the person that's going to do that? This lady that I've got the copy of, she moved from Eagles Watch in Hampstead. She knows she doesn't live in Pender County. But she just doesn't pay any attention to it.
Yeah.
Well, I think a start is...
Yeah, I just don't know how we get that information.
Targeting those areas where you have that overlap.
There's no news people in here right now. So I can say it, there's very few people that watch local TV.
Yeah.
So you can't put a campaign on TV. Not everybody has Facebook and social media, so we can't do that. We have one local newspaper in the county that runs weekly and the majority of their subscriptions are in that area. So I don't know how you, I'm sorry to get off topic.
Mailing might be a start.
Maybe a targeted mailing.
Well, it could also be something that I would be glad to bring up, you know, at our conferences that we have, whenever we do have the attention of, you know, other people from the state that are there and CDUR and that are, you know, more in ties with how motor vehicle billing is working. It may be, if we're having the problem.
Yeah, there's gotta be others.
Then there's others. So I would be glad to bring this to someone at our tax collections conference and say, have you gotten these complaints? What do you suggest we do about this? How have you combated this?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, not at all. Not at all. That's what we're here for.
Well, thank y'all.
Thank you.
I've been lost track of where we're at now. Somebody's got to pull me back in. 10.3, Approval Resolution Supporting An Application To Local Government Commission For Approving Of A County Financing Agreement For The 2024 New DHHS Facility. Ms. Blue.
Ms. Blue.
Good evening again. This is a follow-up to the public hearing that we had earlier for the Department of Health and Human Services facility. This is a resolution in support of our application to the local government commission for the approval of the bond issuance. That will occur in September. The meeting with the local government commission.
DHHS project.
Is there any questions for Ms. Blue? If not, is there a motion to approve 10.3?
Motion to approve.
There's a second.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you very much.
One step closer to modernization in Pender County. 10.4, Annual Approval Annual Purchase Order.
Yes, so good evening again, commissioners. I'm asking for an approval of annual purchase order to Core Main Ferguson Water Works and Ford Line Water Works for water and sewer repair supplies and equipment. This comes to a total of $570,000 and it has been budgeted. This was part of the budget on line item 072, that's 40330A, which is supplies, water inventory. As every year, Pender County Utilities strategically allocate adequate funding to enhance customer service throughout efficient procurement practices. Following a regular evaluation process, three vendors were chosen from a pool of five respondent to manage the acquisition of supplies and equipment crucial for repairing the water distribution and sewer circulation system. So pretty much, Mr. Brian Terry, who is our water and sewer superintendent, took an inventory of what we need for the remaining part of the year, being valves, feedings, pipes, anything that we need for the year. And created an inventory list, submitted it to our local vendors around the area and the region. And out of that, five responded. Out of the five, we picked three. And the goal is to create this purchase order and have this pool of money so that when we have an emergency, we go to these three vendors and we look for, first of all, who's the lowest bidder for the same piece of equipment? And if not, who is the most available at the time? Because as you know, right now, getting supplies, it doesn't come as fast as it used to. So it's either availability or cause. We make the decision when the situation arise. So I'm asking you to please to approve $570,000 of budgeted on three separate, actually it's gonna be on one purchase order, but it's gonna be to Core Main Ferguson Water Works and Ford Line Water Works.
So this is approved under the 2025 budget, county budget.
That is correct.
Any other questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I pulled July of 2023, and it was a total of $450,000. All those materials have been used?
Yes, sir, they have been.
Every single line item?
Yes, sir. So the way, I didn't budget 23, but this is what we did. So throughout the year, we go ahead and utilize what we need to do repairs. At the end of the year, there'll be some money in there. It's not going to be that much, but there'll be some money in there. And we try to figure out, okay, we have a few more months before the next budget year begins. What do we need? As a matter of fact, one of it was a hydrant that you requested to be replaced. So we went ahead and bought that hydrant at the time with that little bit of money that was left in there. It was a small amount of money to transfer over, but not much to make that much of a difference. This year, this year, the amount of money is much bigger. That's taken in consideration that we have now approximately 3,000 more homes than what we did.
Yeah, my second question was gonna be, if you don't use all those line items, the money will stay in the fund?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's kind of like a blanket, right? You just draw off any needed.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve 10.?
Do these materials, purchase for these materials, these fundings come out of enterprise?
It is an enterprise, yes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, commissioners.
Oh, Mr. Clough, may I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
On another issue, where are we on the 421 water line project?
Oh, yeah. So recently, we had a public hearing. And this came as a result that we are filling out an application. We're putting out right now an application for the CDVGI, which is a community development block grant. So the first step was to have, again, another public hearing, which we did recently. Mr. Burton attended, and so was Mr. Michael Silverman. We had a great attendance. We have now everybody's name since we started this a year ago. So next week, I'm having a meeting with CDM Smith, who is going now to put everything in place together to submit to the state for trying to acquire money. The hope is to at least get $3 million so that we can go ahead and begin with phase one, which has been from Sampson County up to Highway 11.
So have we selected our entity who will be doing the funding acquisitions for us?
Yes, we have.
And who is that again?
CDM Smith is doing all the work for us.
Great, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
10.5, The Land Transfer, Land Title. Yes, we will have Mr. Jessup come up and present this item. Welcome, Mr. Jessup.
Thank you. Thank you. It's great to be here. I'm Bob Jessup. I'm a lawyer with the firm Sanford-Holzhauser. And it's been my pleasure for many years to work as the special outside lawyer to the county for work on borrowing money projects. So I'm working on the, so I'm working on the Law Enforcement Center project. And as you may remember, that property was given to the county by the state. As we're getting closer to the closing, we want to make sure that we have all our real estate matters buttoned up, both for the original, closing on the original financing as well as for any later transactions we might want to do, whether that's a refinancing transaction or there's always the idea that we, the county might ask the state at some later time to allow the county to use a portion of that property for some other purpose. The way that the state gave the property to the county was in the name of both the Board of Commissioners as well as the county. And that's unusual, in my experience, for how the county would ordinarily do property transactions. So we've asked the, we'd like to have this resolution so we can clarify that state of the title. It's actually the title insurance company that's asked for a formal resolution with the county okaying this change. And this will do that. Be happy to answer any other questions. Otherwise, we'd ask for the board to approve the resolution in the form presented.
Is there any questions for Mr. Jessup? And if y'all want to read it, I have it here somewhere. It says, Introduction, The County Will Soon Be Construction Of A New Law Enforcement Center, LEC. The State of North Carolina Gave Intended Site, The Site, For LEC To The County In 2019. The deed from the state named the grantees of the property is both the county of Pender and the Board of Commissioners of Pender County. This board has been advised that it will facilitate the county's upcoming financial LEC construction if the site ownership were simplified and stated to be only in the name of the Pender County, North Carolina. The board understands this change also to facilitate possible future refinancing and other property transactions with the site as well as to add clarity to the county's real estate records. So it's just saying that we're not part of the ownership that the county's gonna own.
The county's gonna own it, and we don't have any ambiguity between who does that mean, who needs to approve things. That we'd always come back to, the board would have to approve things, but the documentation would be simplified.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jessup.
It's my pleasure. Thanks for approving that and thanks for adding it to the agenda. I know that's not something you like to do every day. Thanks very much.
Have a safe trip back. 10.6 was item, formerly item 9.2. Approval Of Budget Amendment And Related Purchase Orders For Purchase Of Surf Office Authorized New And Replacement Vehicles. I think we talked about, and Mr. Burton wasn't here during budget, but Ms. Blue, isn't this, we talked about this in budget, right? This is gonna come out of capital instead of out of his budget. I think was we, instead of pulling that big number. So I'm sorry, Sheriff, so yours?
No, no, I appreciate it. That, as I was gonna say, as you, I'm sure you know, the fiscal budget year that we just entered into did not involve vehicles. Nine of these that we're requesting would be for new positions. And the remainder of those would be in keeping with the vehicle replacement policy. Ms. Blue might be able to tell you the exact figures on the funding, but...
So this is going through the new vehicle policy we approved last year, where we had a rotation set up where it meets certain criteria as when it's due for replacement or it's downgraded to a service vehicle or till it rotates out of the system.
That's right.
Is that the system we're using for these two, Greg?
That's right. And just some brief, real quick information here. I was just looking through the numbers today. We have 12011 model, 62010 models, 92013 models, and 132014 models. So those are your vehicles that are 10 years and older. I don't have the exact mileage on those, but just looking at age of the vehicles. And replacing, what we're proposing to replace this year would be on pace to replace about one-sixth of the fleet. You got 120-some vehicles, so it would be about one-sixth of the fleet, which would also to equate to replacing a vehicle every six years, which I would figure would be about an average of 150,000 miles over those six years. That's, some get driven more, some get driven less.
Serviced in Pender County.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions?
Yeah, Sheriff, just thank you, Sheriff, for laying that out. That's the biggest reason I wanted to pull it. I wasn't here for those budget talks. And it's just unusual when you're looking at $1.9 million, we gotta pull out the fund balance, and we just voted on the budget. That's where the disconnect came with me, and I was talking to Ms. Blue about it, about when the budget work session was going through, why didn't, you know, the county look and say, hey, we just need to add that in your budget to do that? That's the big reason I wanted to pull that, because the average citizen watching this tonight is not gonna know that. All they're gonna see is us pulling $1.9 million out and adding it, you know, for vehicles. And that's the biggest reason I wanted to, just get those questions in that background.
Yeah, and I fully expected that. It's a big number.
It is.
Big number.
Yeah.
And I think it's just to, you know, get them in a lump sum this year instead of getting them where we can find them. And I'd also like to bring up, there's been, I don't know if it's some concern or just question in the community about the different colors of vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
A few years ago, we attempted to go with that gold color, and we really wanted to settle in on that. Then COVID hit. If anybody's been in fleet, trying to buy fleet vehicles for the last two or three years, it has been a challenge. So what we were having to do is just get a handful of vehicles that other agencies had ordered and then they backed out on. And we ended up getting them good deals there. So I was not gonna let a color hold us back from saving the county money in those situations. So I think now we're able to, we've been able to get our hands on some black ones. I think we're pretty much gonna settle in on black across the board if we can get them, so, yeah. But all at once this year, instead of coming to you every few months and asking for a handful of them.
And one other thing, Sheriff, is, so when the new ones come in, say, I got one that's got 150,000 miles and I'm due to get a new one. Will my equipment, light package and everything, go in the new one?
Some of it does, but, you know, a lot of the radio equipment is, you know, outdated by that time. So, I mean, we do try to reuse equipment that we can.
Okay.
Absolutely. Because that's where a lot of the cost comes in.
Oh, our radio is expensive, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Any other questions for the sheriff? If not, is there a motion to approve 10.6?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you for your support.
So we have, Commissioner Burton, there's some other items that will be coming that we didn't budget. We could kind of put in like a capital improvement plan that will come out of, I think Parks and Rec's got some facilities they want to...
Okay.
Those sorts of things that look weird to me when it comes to them.
I guess it's nice that the citizens understand.
Oh, yeah.
Discussion. We have no discussion on the docket unless y'all have something you want to discuss. And we're moving to 12.1, Reappointments To The Pender County Nursing And Adult Care Homes Advisory Committee.
I would like to preface our discussion of these first two items by acknowledging that we have been given applications that are outdated. The first two applications are dated in 2018, and the application for 12.2 is dated 2023. There's a reason that we ask for current applications for these positions, that we've run into some situations in the past, that residencies have changed, affiliations have changed, and their ongoing involvement in other county boards have changed as well. So it's important that we get updated applications for each of these positions that we're filling. So I, for one, would like to see an updated application from 2018, but understanding for this 12.1, these two applicants that we're looking at, their tenure ended on June 30th of 2024. So we're kind of under the gun on these positions as well. And I'm not sure about the Tourism Development Authority.
I can get updated ones if you would like and put them on for the next agenda. I was told that these applications are still the same current information as a new one would be.
Well, we need that information to be current.
Okay.
So it was the board's pleasure. Do we want to vote on these now or do we want to table these two until the next meeting?
I'm at the board's pleasure.
It's up to, y'all, I don't have a say. Are these the only two applicants?
Yes.
Do you make a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve.
For 12.1? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? The Nursing Tourism Development Authority?
So this is for Lori Hastings. She is applying for reappointment. Currently, she is serving in the District 1 seat for the remainder of her previously vacant term. Her term expires August 31st, 2024. She's reportedly very active on the board. She's recommended for reappointment by Olivia Dawson and myself. Should you vote to reappoint her, her new term would begin September 1st, 2024, and expire on August 31st, 2027.
And this was advertised, and this is the only applicant, right?
This is my only applicant, yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve 12.2?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? 12.3, Appointment To The Pender EMS And Fire Board Of Directors.
The District 5 representative position on the Pender EMS and Fire Board Of Directors was left vacant following the departure of Greg Holloman. James Taylor has applied to fill the remaining term of the District 5 representative seat. Mr. Taylor has previously served on the Pender County Fire Commission from 2017 to our current year and has experience as the Bergoff Fire Department Chief, the minimoney... Sorry, I'm not very good at this. Fall Fire Department Battalion Chief and Chapel Hill firefighter in the past. He has also served on various other boards within Pender County's community. Should the board vote to appoint him to fill the remaining term, the term would begin February 1st, 2022, and it would expire January 31st, 2025.
And currently, he is only a member of one other county board, correct?
Correct. But has served on others in the past.
Mr. McCoy, he is your representative for your district?
Yeah, I recommend, yeah, I know, 12.3.
Yes, sir. Have a motion to approve, is there a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Appointment of map review officer for the town of Bergoff.
Yes, so the town of Bergoff passed a resolution, that was 2024-11, requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve the appointment of Ron Meredith. He's the town of Bergoff's planning director, as the new map review officer for the town of Bergoff, along with the already approved James A. Gant and Kimberly Reivenberg. In your packets is the resolution that they passed as well.
Yeah, I know, I'll make a motion to approve.
12.4, have a motion, is there a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. And I'm going to take this one, just because I want to speak on this. 12.5, appointment of the county commissioner to the Novant-Pender Hospital Board. I think we're going to hold off on appointing that position until December. And the reason being is there, there's a new board, possibly four new board members coming in December. And there's one more meeting of the hospital board in September. They meet every two months, and there's an orientation involved to be a member. So it would be, I don't, I think we're better off to wait till the new board seats and pick a member. So we'll just be one shy. I know I pushed for that, to fill that position, but after.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So I think we're going to hold off if the board members, if the board members are in agreement with that.
Yes, I think that's the wise course of action. But also, at our last meeting, we discussed that we needed to vet two other designees that, we have a majority of the board for Novant. The county chooses five, and the hospital, Novant, has four members. Two of their members are going off on rotation and are up for reenrollment. And I think you've talked with Ruth Glasser?
Yes.
And this is the meeting that, or I guess we could do it in August, our second meeting. But the hospital board is meeting in September to finally approve the members that we have vetted, which will be Novant's designees. So I guess we'll be seeing that on the next agenda.
Yes, that would be planned, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So that is tabled until, we're tabling 12.5 till December. Appointment of the NCACC delegate. Due to the impending possible threat of severe weather, I don't think I will be attending. Commissioner Rose will not be attending, and Commissioner Newton has decided she's not going to attend. Commissioner Burton, at this time, is still planning to attend, I think, correct, sir?
Yeah, unless, unless it's canceled.
Unless it's canceled. So far, it hasn't been, because they said you'll be safe in the Coliseum Convention Center.
Yes. She said to keep an eye on your emails in case we do, but as of right now, there's no cancellation, so.
There is a conference call with Kevin Leonard in the morning at 10 o'clock. I think I sent you that. That is correct, yes, sir. And something may come out of that in the morning. He's the director. So if there is no objection.
So I'll nominate Commissioner Burton for our designated representative, who has our voting member for Pender County.
Here's the nomination, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Congratulations.
Burton will be there, you'll get to wear a fancy tag all weekend, since it's delicate or something.
And vote on Saturday.
And vote on Saturday. There's nothing under any of the water and sewer district boards, is that, are we good? Thank you. Health Department? Nope. Social Services? I don't see West tonight. Items from the county attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, you wish to go back in the closed session?
Yes.
For the, and it will still be all three, four, five, and six, consistent with the motion the board previously made.
Thank you, sir. County manager?
Yes, sir.
Assistant county manager?
I'll have anything, thank you.
Commissioner Newton?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, it was something, and it was in reference to something that the manager had handed previously. In late June, the Supreme Court rejected the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy settlement. And that was part of the opioid money that was baked in. Until that gets resolved, that money will not be coming. We had approved going forward with that, but again, the Supreme Court said, basically, people were getting protection under the bankruptcy code without having to file bankruptcy. And the Supreme Court said, you can't do that. So that settlement is now no longer in place. And that could affect, not hugely, but it was $11 billion that was going nationwide. So it's, again, considerably more than the Kroger settlement was that would be coming our way. So I just want to let the board know that. And that is, there will be additional settlements as things move forward on that. And, but again, it doesn't, we certainly don't budget money until we get it. So that has not happened. I just want to let the board know that, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a take for the appeal?
No, it is not going to move ahead. Somebody had protected leave, so we do not yet know when the appeal will be heard.
Mr. Manager, you might have more updated information than I do on the hospital reparations?
I have not received any updates on that.
Okay, all right. So the last time I talked to Ruth, the contractors are in place, the work is commenced. I did a tour, or we did a tour, what was it, last week, the end of the week before? And false walls were being put up. They were basically tearing out the outer walls and putting in a membrane to prevent the sweating from, or moisture barrier, I guess, in the outside walls. So that will take some time, but work's moving along at a rapid pace. And as usual, Ruth Glasser's got everything under control, and is doing a good job getting that hospital remediation taken care of as quickly as possible. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
I'm good.
You're good. Commissioner Burton?
Just one thing, I did have the pleasure, back on the 29th, to attend the community meeting for the future water growth and development up in the northern part of the county, up on 421 North. We met at Pender Lee's School Gymnasium Auditorium, basically. Had a great turnout from local folks, and hats off to Mr. Cologne and his team for being highly organized and highly proactive and connecting, and promising that community that they're going to move forward this. We've had folks that have paid some fees and look forward to water for 17 years. And that's just ridiculous. And thanks to you and your team for moving it along.
Mr. Rose?
I'm going to echo the same thing about water. I had a call today, the man's been waiting on water for 18 years, 1242 McCrery Road in Rocky Point. He's paid his money, and he's been waiting on water for 18 years. So I want to pass that on. See what it would take to get this man some water?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And about 20 homes down there is what he said. That's all I have.
And I have nothing tonight. I appreciate your attendance, and we are going to go back into closed session at this time. We're going to stay in here.